Hey John Mark.
Hi.
Thank you so much for joining me today.
Hey, of course. Glad to be here.
So the name of the series is All Roads Lead to Pullman.
Oh, is that what that is?
That's what that is. What I love about our, I love a lot of things about our community. One of them is that everyone's here on purpose.
Yes.
Nobody drifts through Pullman, you know.
I would disagree with that.
Okay, okay. Well, in general, if you come here, it's to get a degree, to start a job, start a company. It's something, you know, the next progressive thing in your life.
You'd think.
You'd think, yeah. But, but everybody has an interesting story of how they got here because no one came here by accident. So what's your road to Pullman? How did you end up coming to the Palouse?
Well, let's see. I was actually born in Tacoma, but my mom was raised in Oakdale, which is about forty miles to the north. Yeah, so I would spend the summers in Tacoma with my dad's family and I'd spend the rest of the time going to school and stuff over here. Now, originally, I was not born in Pullman, but I have lived a lot of time in Pullman. I came here in third grade and went to school through fourth grade, first part of fourth grade. And then I came back in nineteen eighty-one. Long story, but you know, a lot of moving around. Let's just say that, you know, kids, kids, you know, some kids are lucky enough to move around a lot, some kids are lucky enough to stay in one place.
I was one of those kids who moved around a lot.
Yeah, okay, so you understand. So anyway, we come here, you know, and I graduated high school from Pullman High School in nineteen eighty-seven. And I pretty much lived here ever since. I, I did go off and go to school over on the coast. I've made trips to, I spent some time living outside of Chicago in Waukegan, spent some time living in Norfolk. Well, north of Norfolk, Virginia, actually, little town called Phoebus, which.
Driven through Phoebus.
Literally, well, you don't drive through it, you drive past it usually. Unless you're going to.
We're seeing the exit sign.
If you go to historic Fort Monroe, you go through Phoebus, because that is the connection to the peninsula. But I, I always came back here, you know, as the song says, we always find our way home, back home, right? I always came back here because every time I'd leave for any length of time, I'm like, I need to get home. I need to go home. This is not home. And so here I am. And I've lived here ever since.
Awesome. So, so that's how you got here, but why did you stay? Because you could have, you could have gone anywhere. What makes this place special?
Everything. I mean, that's too, that's too easy of an answer. Everything about Pullman, really. I love, let's see, let's start with the weather. The weather is fantastic. We have four seasons, right? It's not always the best, you know, sometimes it's too hot, sometimes it's too cold, but where are you gonna go in the world that that doesn't happen? You know, the, the diversity is amazing. I mean, where else are you gonna come to a town this size and find people from all over the world, you know, students coming here from all over the world, find technology leaders, you know, when I was here back in nineteen eighty-seven, Schweitzer literally was still in Ed's garage. And we all knew about it, but nobody else in the world did. Now the entire world, you know, I, I don't wanna say trembles at the, at the name of Schweitzer Engineering.
The entire world's power system does run on Schweitzer relays.
So, so they probably should tremble because if they ever went out.
Which unfortunately won't because Schweitzer is making power safer, more reliable and more economical.
Ooh, ooh, look.
Hashtag.
Hashtag.
Don't know where I heard that.
Rumor has it. But yeah, I mean, where else are you gonna find that kind of true diversity? And then in the summertime, the students typically go away and it turns into just a general small town. Literally fire a cannon down Main Street and not hit anyone on, on a Sunday evening. I know that sounds weird.
Please don't fire a cannon.
Yeah, please. No, that would be bad. That would be very bad. Yeah, that, that was not a suggestion. It was, it was, and I don't know, allegory, would that be?
Sure.
Sure, why not? Let's, let's, yeah. Wrong word, but you get the gist.
Yeah, our town changes in the summer and it's, it's a nice, it's a nice change of the season.
Yeah, where else are you gonna find a town this size? And I used to joke about, you know, it's like a town this size with two McDonald's. Who would ever expect that? Yeah, but you know, I mean, it's true. We have a lot of services available in this town that normally, you know, if, if Washington State University and Schweitzer and the hospital were not here, we might not be much different from, say, Palouse or Oakdale or Garfield. We, we might be more like that as, as a farming community or a bedroom community to some other, well, even Moscow with U of I. But we aren't. We are a wonderful community, a very diverse community, and I just absolutely love it here. Not to mention, you know, what kind of natural disasters do we have here?
Not many.
Right. You know, you go down south, you gotta worry about hurricanes. You go to central US, you gotta worry about, you know, I mean.
Tornadoes.
Tornadoes and, and you know, other wind events in Chicago, the snow and, and earthquakes down in California. Here, what, like once every five hundred years, a mountain explodes?
Or.
Who cares?
The occasional field fire.
Yeah, well, yeah. I mean, that can be life-changing, that's true. But you know, I'm talking like huge natural disasters, the explosion of Mount St. Helens, for example. It's just not a, not a common occurrence.
Forty-five years ago.
Yeah.
Very cool. So what made you decide to run for city council? What was like the inciting incident that made you go, I gotta throw my hat in the ring?
Wow, okay. Well, I've been considering it for many years. I've run for county commissioner twice. You may or may not know that.
I think, I think I've seen some signs out there.
Sorry. Yeah, it, it happens. I, I loved those signs, you know, they got the blue sky and, and golden wheat and everything, but you know, that was, that was my little design influence here. Excuse me, I may have to take some of that water.
Go for it. We got time.
Okay, yeah, you, you also have editing facilities, sorry.
Oh, we're not gonna, we're just doing this.
Oh, really?
Right through, yeah.
Cool, okay.
Live tape, no censorship.
Look, here's me drinking water. Call me Marco Rubio. Anyway. I'm sorry, what was the question?
What was, well, what prompted you to run for city council? What was like the inciting incident that made you go, I gotta, I gotta step up and, and go after that seat?
Right. Okay, so I did run for county commissioner because.
Yep, which is.
Well, it was a start.
Very different role.
Right, but it was a start. It was, it was a foray into politics and I, I learned a lot about regional politics just doing that. You know, I talked to several county administrators at various levels throughout the state and learned a bunch of interesting stuff. I have been personal friends and acquaintances of various city councilors through the years, mayors, past mayors. In fact, you know, I've gone to school with children of mayors. That's one of the bonuses of living in Pullman. Yeah, I, I decided that this year, what, what made me think about it was, okay, the council race is coming up. When, when Gathier decided to step down, I, I really enjoyed his input on the council. I, I enjoyed his methodology of being a councilperson. He didn't speak often, but when he did speak, it was very eloquent, it was well thought out, it was measured. It was not just, you know, this is what I think right now. Oh, I changed my mind a little bit, you know, kinda thing. It was very succinct and, and I don't wanna say passionate necessarily, but it was very, it carried a lot of weight.
Yeah.
Say that. And I wanted to make sure that that kind of thing continued in the council. Now, we have many different councilors. I like to say that we all bring different things to the table and that is true of everyone that's running this year in any ward. In fact, every single person that's running for Ward One, the position I'm running for, I would be happy to vote for in, you know, if I, if I do not make it through the primary, I would be happy to vote for any, any single one of them. They're all amazing people. In fact, if, if I do make it through and I do become a councilperson, I would hope that they would allow me to call on them to be advisors in certain instances. Because as I said, we all bring different things to the table. What made me decide to run ultimately, there were two things. Number one, I love Pullman. I was raised here, I grew up here, at least that's, that's how I feel. I spent my wonder years here, let's say that. And it is just, it's home, it's, it's a place I feel most comfortable, it's a place I feel passionate about. I've been involved in the community for many years. I was on the Humane Society for ten, eleven years. I've worked with the Fourth of July Committee for fifteen years now. I, I have, I have involved myself in, you know, different aspects of the city. And I thought, well, maybe I should step up, maybe I should actually do something that, you know, helps decide the future of Pullman. Instead of being active in the community and, you know, helping it continue on, why not be proactive?
Yeah, so.
And join the council.
Because you love Pullman?
Yes.
What's the other reason?
The other reason, and I'm sure a lot of people were spurred on by this, was the incident that happened with the city manager. Yeah, when, when Mike Urban left the position, I know there were a lot of feelings, positive, negative, and, and a lot of concern. And that brought a lot of concern to me because, you know, if I, if I can be candid, we, we basically went from, well, you know, does he have a job? Is he going back to the job? Is there a possibility of a lawsuit to, okay, he's fired now, but he says he wasn't, or, you know, I, actually fired is the wrong word. He was, he, he has decided to not pursue the role, which, you know, depending on who you talk to.
Yeah.
If you talk to the mayor.
And when you're talking to him.
Yeah, he said, no, he decided not to come back to work. And if you talk to Mike, he says, no, I never said that. And, you know, just the, everything that followed that, all, you know, the, the documentation or lack thereof and the various other concerns that were raised by that, I decided, okay, you know what, it is time to step into the ring. And, and I think that's part of the reason we have so many people running this time around. Typically, a city council race, if it is unop- or is opposed, which it usually isn't, it's maybe three people at the most, but to have seven and eight candidates and, and I think War Two started out with five or six. It's, it's kinda, it's kinda crazy. And I, I think that spurred a lot of people on.
Okay, well, well, you, you brought up the city manager situation.
Sure.
What do you, what do you wish was different about that? Because we all agree that's messy. But, you know, I've yet to run into somebody who has all the facts and that includes, that includes the people closest to this situation.
Well, you hit on it right there. Communication. Where's the communication? You know, we're, we're not hearing everything from both sides. We're hearing from both sides. But, you know, we were told that he submitted his resignation. There is no paperwork that shows.
We were told that he resigned.
Yeah.
We weren't told that he wrote us a resignation letter.
Okay, as I understood it, they had supporting documentation.
That's different than submitting a letter, but I'm just going, I'm just going off, so I, I don't.
That's true.
I don't have any inside knowledge on this at all, except that.
Yeah.
I know Francis and I know Mike and I know their personalities.
Yes.
And as, you know, as more information has come out, which has been very slow to come out.
Yes.
The picture is becoming a little less fuzzy to me, but I, you know, again, I can't, I shouldn't comment on other people's.
We can't make any generalization, anything beyond generalization.
The lack of communication, I mean, it's, it's a personnel issue.
Yes.
It, it's not legal.
No.
To communicate about it, which makes it a understandable frustration, but also one that's impossible to fix because none of us can get the closure that we want in the moment. You have to let the lawyers do their thing.
My concern is the communication between Mike and Francis or the city and, and the lack thereof. Because obviously, they weren't on the same page. And, and we know that now.
Might explain why he's not working here anymore.
Yeah, maybe, maybe.
You typically want your head city employee to be in good communication with your head elected official.
And, and you also want the city to be in good communication with all the employees as well.
For sure.
And I'm not sure that that is happening, at least not to the level it should.
Let's just, we're gonna go there way earlier in this interview than I have with any other candidate, but you brought it up. So what do you feel like, what change do you feel like you could bring about from the city council on the way staff communication occurs?
That's interesting because unfortunately, that is the domain of the city manager, that is the domain of the mayor. You know, what can, what can the city council do? The city council can look at the way the city operates and there are certain things that we can change within city government, certain procedures that could improve the communication. Obviously, well, for example, you know, like there's, there's strict procedures in city operation, all right? And if you have one group communicating with another group, there is, you know, you have to save all the information. If it's email, you have to save all the emails, you know, and, and be able to release those if there's a, a request for information from the public.
Right. Assuming that it's not a pending legal case.
Or, yeah, or done in exact or something like that.
Once the case is done, assuming things aren't sealed, it could be, you could do a FOIA request.
Right, I'm, I'm sure at the end of all this, we're going to find out, you know, what hap- actually happened. At this point, it's, it's kinda conjecture, but.
But if this is your inciting incident for running, I don't mind asking you, what do you think happened?
That, well, I don't know. Nobody knows completely.
I, I agree, but like.
I've talked to both parties and, and Francis maintains that he quit. Okay, fair enough. And Mike says he didn't quit.
Yeah.
So it's a he said, she said kinda situation.
Well, except that there's been some document releases since then.
Yes.
And how do those correspond with the accounts you've heard?
That, that's, that's difficult to say, because how do you, how do you put that all together? I mean, it's like trying to put together a puzzle without all the pieces.
No, I understand. And I, I'm not, you know, I have no skin in this.
Yes, no.
I just know that.
Not saying you do.
I just know that you can't, this will apply to any city in any place in America, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
You cannot sue a city and run a city at the same time.
No.
And so when it comes out that there was an email sent that said, it's time for me to negotiate my exit.
Yeah.
And that note was sent in advance of all of this playing out.
Right.
You know, it's hard not to think that there was some.
Discussion.
Not just discussion, but like, you know, if you ever wanna gum up the works, walk up to the city and say, I'm gonna sue you.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't have to be in writing.
Well, at this point, that's where we are.
Well, no, I'm just talking general public. All you have to do is threaten litigation.
Yeah.
And the, the city government is required to relate with you as if you were suing them.
Yes.
And so for your head city official to do that, you, you can't be on both sides of that equation at the same time. And if after a certain number of time, you weren't willing to take that back, I mean, that sounds like a de facto resignation to me.
That's, that's fair. That's fair.
Is there, is there another scenario that you suspect happened?
You know, I, I don't know. I am, I am not Mike, I am not Francis.
I'm an Occam's razor kinda guy. I, I think the simplest explanation is usually the correct one.
I, I would agree.
And I've been through.
Occam's razor, yes.
I've been through employment disputes myself. I've been on both sides of that equation. I've fired people and I've been the person fired. And, you know, it's not fun.
Not fun on either side.
It's painful, it's emotional, but, you know, I, I think that in the end, all parties are gonna be in a better place if they move on to the next thing.
I, I really hope so. I, I really hope you're right on that. I, I wish them, you know, obviously, I wish the best for Francis because of his position that he's in.
His success is all his success.
We need the strength, you know, we need him to be a strong, positive mayor. And same with Mike, you know, Mike is.
Mike is a sweet.
He's a great guy. His wife, his, his kids, you know, and, and, you know, I, I know they deal with, you know, I mean, he has one son with developmentally disabled son, which is a challenge, but he's met that. With some, met that incredibly well.
Yes, I agree.
So, so, you know, I mean, there are a lot of challenges that he's faced. So I hope that the future brings him and his family nothing but success.
I, I agree.
And I believe that will be the outcome, as, as you said. But in the meantime, we have this messy thing to go through. It's like going through a divorce in a way.
Absolutely.
And, and it's.
No employment dispute.
I don't wanna take a side.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I don't like how it was playing out. Well, I really don't like.
The frustrating part, the whole thing to me is that so many of the people that I've seen publicly rushing to condemn the mayor for how he's handling this employment situation were the same people who were asking for Mike Urban's head on a stick nine months ago. And I'm like, I, I, I honestly wonder with some people, are people, are you just rooting for the community to fail?
No.
Like, I'm not, I'm not saying.
Yeah, okay.
But the most vocal people who are trying to hype up the scandal did not like Mike six months ago.
No.
Until suddenly, they found an opportunity to attack the mayor and now they're Mike's best friend. And I'm like, okay, can we all just agree that we're people and we're, you know, we're all batting five hundred, right?
It's like going on nextdoor.com.
Oh my gosh. Oh my gosh, yeah. I've, I've, I've had, I've had some, some times on Nextdoor.
Well, again, to go back to the wedding scenario, I mean, that's, that's exactly, or the, excuse me, the divorce scenario. That's the same thing, you know, I mean, people tend to choose sides and sometimes that changes, you know, you find out somebody cheated. Oh, well, I'm not on their side anymore, you know, or you find out that, you know, somebody took all the money and ran off to camp.
So are, are you open to the possibility that there's variables here that you may not know that might change your opinion?
Oh, I'm not open to the policy. I, I.
Possibility.
Oh, possibility. I, I believe that is the case.
Okay.
But that still doesn't change the fact that that was a motivating factor.
Yeah.
That was a concern. And when you watch that happen in your hometown, and as you said, you know, I mean, are we rooting for the community to fail? No, we are not. I, I don't know anybody that would do that on a conscious level. Subconsciously, maybe they, you know, maybe that's the direction they're going and they don't realize it. But yeah, no, I, I wanted to run partially because of that, simply because I don't wanna see that kinda thing happen. And if we need to work through this, I'd like to do it calmly and, and with understanding, listening to both sides and making sure that ultimately we come out.
When there's an active employment dispute involving lawyers.
And, and, you know, ultimately, like I said, this, this will likely end up in a lawsuit. I, I am almost a hundred percent certain.
It'll end in a settlement and it'll be smaller than he would like and more than the taxpayers would like.
As it always is.
That's just how it goes.
But, you know, there, there will, there will be papers filed, is all I'm saying.
I, I love our community. I love how smart our community is. I love that I can throw a rock and hit a PhD. You know, like you go down to, to Los Angeles and you can walk up to anybody at Starbucks and ask, how's your screenplay going? Right? Whereas around here.
That's a good point.
In Pullman, you can walk up to anybody at, at Neil's Coffee and say, how's your dissertation coming?
Almost.
Right? Like, it's, it's pretty cool. And, and I love how smart our town is. I love that. At the same time, our town loves a good conspiracy. Our town loves to connect dots that aren't necessarily there and paint this vast, you know, conspiracy of, of factors. And, and I was in the middle of some of it when we had the downtown project.
That's true.
It was kind of insane, the kind of.
Your company was handling the media.
Up portion of the media. We made some videos, but you know, just being in the, some of the council meetings and hearing the discussion and then for a while, I had a lot of people approaching me wanting to kind of flip my opinion on some things. And like, hey, no, we really should shut down this project to try and save the trees, you know, that kinda stuff. And, and it was, it was honestly disappointing to see so many really smart people kinda go down the rabbit hole. You know, it's like, okay, we all make fun of QAnon, but this is like borderline QAnon, the conspiracy. And I, I'm kinda curious, what was your experience during that tumultuous twelve months? Not just the project itself, but the lead up to the project.
Yeah, it was, it was interesting. I was on the side of, you know, there, there were people who were pro tree and against the trees.
Which is a bizarre false dichotomy to put out there.
That's, that's a wrong way to put it, actually. They were for keeping the trees and for getting rid of the trees. I was pro tree.
Yeah.
And what I mean by that is I was out for the best interest of the trees. Now, the trees, we knew they were tearing up the sidewalk, they were getting into the foundations, they were the wrong tree, were planted in the wrong place. And they were not doing well, you know, they, they looked well, but they were not going to survive.
For about six weeks, they looked really, really nice.
Yeah, they, they, they were not gonna ultimately survive. I mean, where they were, either it was downtown or it was the trees. And that's unfortunate. The way I looked at it, you know, people were like, you're killing our trees. I'm like, eh, sorta, but it's mercy killing in a way.
Well, it's ultimately a landscaping issue.
Well, yeah, I mean, from a pragmatic point of view, from a pragmatic point of view. But if, if, you know, a lot of the people who were supporting the trees were, you know, they have a right to live, you know, thinking from that point of view. And in that case, my thought was, well, yes, they do, but if they're sick and dying, you know, that's the better choice. You don't wanna sit there and watch them fall apart and then, you know, we go through, we do the downtown project somehow and keep the trees, which is almost an impossibility in my mind. If we did that, you know, how many of those trees are gonna survive ultimately, you know, through that?
Yeah, two or three maybe.
So, yeah, I, I, I don't know, I, I know why people were up in arms. But, you know, we did plant new trees and they're not as big as the old trees. They don't provide the shade that the old trees did yet, but they will.
That is how planting trees works.
Yeah, and, I mean, and that happens in orchards too. They cut down trees and plant new trees and, I mean, that's just, that's, that's part of nature. Trees fall over in nature and their fruits plant new trees naturally. So, you know, in, in this case, yes, it was all man-made, but that's what was going on. We were replacing the trees in downtown for the betterment of the entire community.
Those trees were not native to the Palouse.
No.
So they're, you know, it's a hundred percent artificial.
Yeah, and, and if you're old enough, you remember the trees that were there before and the mess that they made on the site.
Dropped everything.
Oh my gosh, you know, riding a, riding a bicycle down there as a kid, you know, I mean, I'd, I'd come home and I'd have to strip up the back of my shirt, you know, from the wheel spraying all the fruit debris and stuff.
Oh man.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I, I understand why people would get upset about that. People would get upset about a lot of things and, you know.
So I, I have a lot of insider knowledge on that just because I was hired by Welsh Comer.
Right.
After the, after the issue was settled, I was hired by Welsh Comer to do a portion of the communications during the project. But I'm kinda curious, from your perspective, what could we, what did we do well with, with the, the project and what could we have done better?
Your videos made people feel a lot better. I know that.
That's good to hear.
The, the project was a, in full disclosure, I actually follow this guy. He is the armchair engineer. And some of the, if you haven't seen his videos, look them up. Some of the, some of the stuff you do, I mean, it's, it's really cool because you learn a lot about infrastructure that you might not know, you know? And, and it's really cool to learn that and it's very digestible chunks. So I, I love the format and I love what you do there. As far as your videos downtown, great. I thought they were fantastic. The media relations side of it is the big problem I had. Working for Pullman Radio, I, I do of course deal with our news director on occasion. And I, I know there's concerns that he raised that may or may not have been true. There's concerns, you know, but, well, you know, I, I know he was concerned about where the funding was going and things like that. You know, I mean, media costs money. We all know that. But.
I think I lost money on the downtown.
Yeah, well.
Quite frankly, we, we overdelivered contractually by quite a bit, but.
Which, which, you know what, as a member of the community, first of all, I wanna say thank you for doing that. And second of all, you know, as a member of the community yourself, you know, what, did you really lose money or did you just help out the community? You donated.
Hundred percent. Hundred percent worth it. I'm, yeah, nobody got rich off of this.
Yeah, exactly. And, and nobody shit up.
Paula didn't get rich, you know, Welsh Comer didn't get rich, like we all just did our jobs.
But there, there was a situation where I know Evan was upset and I hate to bring up his name, he's probably gonna get mad at me for doing that. But there, there was a communication glitch where somebody said they weren't gonna talk to him anymore because they didn't like how he was presenting the story. And I know your business, a lot of what you do is controlling the narrative, right? Well, that happens, I mean, that's, that's what it actually says on your website.
But it doesn't say control the narrative, but yeah. Tell, tell your story or someone else will do it for you.
There you go.
Likely won't be flattering, especially if Evan tells it.
And you boil it down into three words and controlling the narrative. Just kidding.
I mean, you can never control a narrative, right? But what you can do is, I'm, I'm always in favor of more communication rather than less.
Amen.
Right? I was actually around when the decision was made to direct Evan's calls to the mayor. As far as I know, the mayor always answered his call.
Answered, yes.
Yeah, yeah. That was, that was a, an attempt to try to centralize communication so that there would be less. Let's just say when we had multiple points of contact, sometimes wires got crossed.
Okay.
And so that was an attempt there.
That's a problem.
What was interesting though was he didn't stop asking.
As any good newsman should.
Oh, okay.
I, I will say that.
Tell me what you mean by that.
Well, any, any good news person, in my experience, is going to keep asking questions and keep asking until they get an answer. That's just the nature of the beat.
So would you say that when the line crosses from asking to making personal attacks of the media contact that you were talking to, that maybe that would cross the line?
There's never an excuse for making personal attacks. And I, again, I'm not, I'm not saying, I, I don't know.
Oh, no, I'll.
I don't know those details.
I'll say it, cuz I was there and watching my colleague's phone get blown up with not borderline harassing, but harassing texts from the individual that we're talking about, saying some very inappropriate things.
I would not characterize him that way.
Neither would I, but I've also.
I would be surprised to see that.
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean.
That's good. We got screenshots.
I'm, I'm not going to forgive it certainly if, since you say and you have screenshots, I'm not gonna forgive.
There's a reason we didn't respond.
Right.
Because he wasn't communicating in good faith.
Okay.
Meanwhile, the mayor was answering his call and the mayor did answer.
Okay, so, see, my understanding was working with like other news outlets, like Big Country News down in Lewiston, for example. You know, it continued on that way, but he was purposely excluded is kind of the, the vibe I was getting and.
We talk about Pullman loving a security, a conspiracy.
Yeah, you know, right, yeah, that's a good point.
Because I actually really appreciate the public service that, that Pullman Radio provides. You know, and if it wasn't for the Weed family keeping that station running.
Amen.
We would essentially have no local news. You know, the, the Moscow Daily News, it's the Moscow Daily News, they don't cover Pullman. And they're probably gonna be out of circulation a few years anyway.
I would, I would disagree with their coverage, but, you know, newspapers, it does seem to be a dying art form, unfortunately. I, I would. They are moving online.
My hat is off to Evan because he's the closest thing we have to a beat reporter.
We're, as far as I know, and, and I'm not speaking for Pullman Radio News or Pullman Radio, I will say that I do know that as far as the other radio stations in the area, they are the only station that has a news department.
Yeah, and, and I, I listen to the show.
And it, and, yeah.
And I.
Morning Show is very popular.
Appreciate that we have that, which is why I'm disappointed that he never called me to ask about anything and instead just put me on blast accusing me of doing a, a backroom deal to steal taxpayer money.
Again, you're, you're telling me things that I was not privy to and, and again, I'm not, I'm not accusing you guys.
I actually made a video response.
I, I didn't see that.
I even disclosed what the, you know, the terms of things. And then he did a second report saying, well, we can't confirm it. Well, I'm like, all right, man.
You know, this, yeah.
That you're going to be a real, a professional journalist here. Like, I, my cell number is listed on my website. You can call me anytime.
Right. I, I, you know, again, I don't know the details there and, you know, that's, that's between you and him.
Well, I, I, I don't want this to be the subject of this conversation.
No, no, I'm, I'm just concerned.
You brought up the issues with Pullman Radio as being an example of how the city government mishandled, uh, Project Downtown Pull.
From my point of view.
Yeah.
From what my understanding. Now, you know, you're sharing information that was not privy to me or anybody else. What I brought up was basically, I was concerned that the communication was cut off. And that's a problem to me. But if there is a, if there is a reason for that communication to be cut off. Whether, you know, somebody agrees with it or not.
It wasn't cut off. It was redirected. The mayor was the, we were under instructions to not respond. If I got a, a call from K L W or KHQ, my instructions were unless they were just asking for photos. My, if they want to comment, all comment was to come from the mayor.
Okay.
And as best I can tell, he accommodated every, every request. He gave.
I know he answered, I know he answered the phone.
Yeah. So it was just, yeah, it's just, anyway. Um, but we don't, this isn't about.
No, 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 no.
What do you feel like we could have done differently with the project? Cause communication is one thing, but what about the project itself?
The, the project, it was, it was difficult for everyone involved. And I know the downtown businesses, they came through it like champs, you know? I mean, there were a couple that left, but there were also new ones that showed up. You know, in the process, I mean, we have an engraving place downtown that people are like, well, there was, there's never new places downtown. Well, we have an engraving place and if you head towards, towards Greystone Grand Gallery, there's also a bakery. We have a new motorcycle repair shop, not downtown proper, but still downtown. So we do, we do see business moving in. So that is a positive as far as I'm concerned. As far as the process, yes, it was difficult. It seemed like nobody really knew what was going on. And going back to your conspiracy theory, people were always wondering, why is it taking so long? Why the cost overruns? You know, and, and again, now this is something that I know the city council was privy to, but a lot of it happened in exact too. A lot of the discussion happened behind closed doors that we are not privileged to know. In, in the process of that though, it, it was interesting because it seemed like they would go behind closed doors and then make a decision. And we would have no justification for that decision. We didn't know what happened. Well, for example, the cost overruns, you know, I mean, there was a penalty that was supposed to be put in place, right? Or that was put in place.
Okay.
Why was that penalty not exercised? Now, whether it should have been or shouldn't have been, you know, again, I'm not privy to that. I don't know that anybody really is. But I'm sure it was discussed in exact, but it came out and, and no penalty was given. Why was that? I'm, I'm kind of curious.
Who have you talked to to try and suss out the answer?
Well, I, I don't really want to reveal those sources because they were private individual conversations.
Okay.
But I have had some discussions with people who were involved or, or did know.
Have you got any satisfactory answers?
No, not really. Because I, and honestly, I didn't expect to because most of the people involved, if you're in an exec session as a city councillor, you know, you're bound by certain restrictions on what you can.
Sure.
Speak about publicly. I mean, as a city councillor, period.
Yeah.
You're bound by certain restrictions, but that.
I've never been in an executive session and I'm not bound by any of that.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Do you have any questions?
I'd love to ask you questions, but is this the forum for it?
Uh, we can keep it quick.
Okay.
Do you want to know off the timeline?
Sure. I, I would, I would love to know why the penalties were not assessed.
Absolutely. So when we.
I'm sure a lot of people would, I'm sorry.
Ultimately it comes down to communication methodology and we should have done better. Because we told the community, the project is going to be this long, ending on a date. And we told people a date.
Yes.
That was.
By, by we, you mean?
The city.
Okay.
The city in working with Welsh Comer.
Okay.
The reason that was a mistake was because the contract never set a date. The contract with Apollo gave a set number of construction days.
Right.
So if there is extenuating circumstances, let's say.
Which there were.
Pullman decided to, uh, throw an impromptu lentil parade that lasted five days. And they can't work, that's not Apollo's fault. Apollo doesn't have to make up that time. They are given access to the site for a certain number of construction days.
Okay.
That's how that works. And then if you added those up with nothing going wrong, it equaled the date that we said, which I think was like mid October. Like October fifteenth. The problem is, after we announced that, the city council found more money. And added back in the change orders that they originally pulled out to meet, meet budget. Those change orders were things like, making the Pine Street Plaza a little nicer.
Right.
Adding in the park benches.
Yeah, there was, there was supposed to be some sort of structure in the middle of the plaza, I remember.
That was, that was already gone. That was never coming back. But like, um, when they, when they voted to do the project, they stripped it down to the bare essentials. And all of the nice added stuff was left out.
Okay.
A few weeks later, some extra money showed up. I think there was some sort of federal grant. And so at the next meeting, they added them back in.
Okay.
The contract was already set, which means the timeline required adding of days.
Yeah.
We did not do, and I say we, I'm, I'm taking ownership here. We didn't do a great job of communicating that to the public and what that meant. Because that October fifteenth day, I think it was October fifteenth, um, was stuck in people's minds. And with the change orders, we were always going to be behind that.
Okay.
Then as the project went along, we found contaminated soil.
Yep. I remember that.
Here's the tricky thing. There is a, a federal law that says, um, if you find an oil spill, you have the right to go back to whoever the parent company is that caused it, doesn't matter how far back.
Yeah.
And seek damages. In this case, I think it was Chevron, Son Mobile, something like that. They have a mechanism for that. They have an office in their headquarters that just handles claims from contaminated soil. The problem is, we can do this the easy way or the hard way. They can make that paperwork go quick, or they can slow walk it to you. And the surest way to slow walk it is to drag their name in the mud. So I was under an instruction to not mention the contaminated soil.
Right.
It's all, it's all been paid for now. So it's out in the open.
Right.
And unless you think this is censorship, it was pragmatic censorship.
No, 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 no. I, I understand the reasoning. Yes.
So that contaminated soil added more construction days. All of it was handled in the public. It's all publicly available. But that bumped the completion date further back.
Right.
And as things started to get tense downtown, this became something that I advocated for. I said, like, the community wants to know about the timeline. There were two subjects I was not allowed to talk about. One was contaminated soil. And one was the timeline. And I can tell you for certain.
That, that makes it challenging.
That was not Apollo's instruction. That was not Welsh Comer's instruction. And that was not Mayor Benjamin's instruction.
So once again, we're back with the issues of communication in the city.
Or, or maybe certain people.
Okay. Well, certain people representing the city.
Uh, certain people who were in charge of the city.
Okay.
That's what, that's what I'm saying. So.
But once again, it, it does circle back to my, one of my original reasons for running.
Well, I mean, ultimately everything rises and falls on leadership.
Yep.
And the tone you set at the top filters all the way down.
Agreed.
And, uh, you know, segue into a completely unrelated topic. Uh, we all know, we all know.
Everybody's tuned out now.
We, we all know that the hiring of the next city manager is going to be, um, a, a defining hire.
Yeah.
Right? Like whoever that person is and the leadership style that they bring to the table, that's going to have a bigger ripple effect than pretty much anything else we could do because it touches every department. And so we need to hope that that process goes really well and that the mayor with the council's input, uh, makes the right choice.
Yeah.
So I'm looking forward to that.
That will be an interesting choice. I, I haven't seen personally, I haven't seen any of the candidates yet.
Well, that's normal for this kind of process at this stage.
Yeah.
There will, there will be a point.
But I, I'm guessing, I'm guessing there will be a slate of, uh, very qualified individuals who are, I'm just.
I've heard secondhand, I've heard secondhand that we, we got a lot of really qualified interested parties.
Okay.
So, but.
So that, that.
We shall see. We shall see.
Ultimately, yeah. We, we don't know until we know.
Yeah. You say on your website that you love the area and that you grew up here. You say, I went to school here, lived here most of my life. Recent events in politics and the possibly dire consequences they might bring have made it imperative to get involved. Tell me a little bit about that. Recent events in politics and the dire consequences.
I, I gotta be honest, Adam. Um, when, when I speak of that, I am speaking of events that might be more of a partisan nature. Now.
You're talking about like national events?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and this, this is a position that is nonpartisan. And for the same exact reasons that I did not and would not attend any partisan fundraiser, barbecue event that was specifically, you know, not, not billed as nonpartisan. For example, at Pups and Cups, uh, tonight, there will be another event at Pups and Cups. It, it is presented by the Whitman County Democrats, but it is strictly nonpartisan. And they are inviting everyone. For the same reasons that I would not attend an event that did have a partisan lane. I would rather not get into that. I think it speaks for itself. There, there are many concerns out there.
Yeah.
And I.
Okay, so that's fine. I assumed you were talking about local politics.
If you know, you know. No, uh, locally, I mean, it's, it's not dire. You know, there's nothing really horrible happening locally.
Okay.
Uh, unless you're talking about events that are triggered at the higher levels of government that are trickling down locally.
Sure. Yeah. Okay, okay. I just want to clarify clarity there.
But I, I want to be clear that this, you know, being a nonpartisan, and, and I have been open as, when I was running for county commissioner, I did run as a Democrat. But I also know the difference between partisan and nonpartisan. I know the difference between representing people in general versus, you know, being a representative brought forth by a certain group of people.
Well, and that's something that I, I love about local politics is that if you're doing it right, a lot of the red versus blue stuff kind of melts away, or at least the D and R stuff.
Yeah.
You know, like, cause we're not talking about how we can allocate trillions of dollars of federal resources or pull back trillions of dollars of federal resources. We're talking about how do we spend our local money on local things.
Properly.
And so.
To the benefit, to the greatest benefit of the people.
Exactly, exactly. So I want to ask you, what do you believe the purpose of city council is? Like, what's city council's job?
Okay. Well, you know, when you look at city council and you look at the mayor, a lot of people are confused by this. They think, you know, city council has a lot more power than they really do. They really do. It's funny. They think, you know, city council is like controlling everything and pulling the strings. Let's go back to that conspiracy theory.
Yep.
The truth is, you know, the city manager runs the city for the most part. The mayor oversees that. The mayor also to a certain degree oversees the city council. It works in conjunction, I would say. It would be a better description. The city council makes decisions as opposed to like the city manager making day-to-day decisions, running the different departments. The city council, uh, takes input from those different departments and takes information and makes decisions on behalf and for the benefit, strictly for the benefit of the residents of the city. They are a representative body of the residents of the city. So basically instead of the city from the mayor on down running everything, the city council works there. They, they do create policy, they do advise on occasion, and they do make decisions based on the input they are given. Uh, some people consider rubber stamping things that are presented to them. On occasion, that is more or less what happens. I'm not going to lie. But in, in most cases, no, there is a lot of discussion that happens. Sometimes things are brought before the council. The council has this, has to discuss it. They have to do their own exploration and decide what is the best choice for the city. You always have to talk to the residents of the city, you know, and not just the people in your ward. You know, every city council position, yes, there are three wards and there's an at-large, or two people from each ward and an at-large. But every single one of those seven council members represents the city at large. They're just taken from those different wards. You always have to be cognizant of what is best for the city as a whole, moving forward. And that's kind of why I want to be part of the council is because I want to be part of that, moving forward. I want to help the city move forward. I want to make sure that everybody has heard, that the right decisions are made. And again, you know, it goes back to some of the city councillors that I've talked to in the past. I, I've had the benefit of not only talking to city councillors, but talking to past mayors. You know, I've, I've talked to Pete Butkus, Carol Helm, I've talked to Mitch Chandler, I, I've talked to Glenn, Glenn, uh, many times. In fact, funny story about Glenn. All right. Love him or hate him as a mayor, he's a great guy. And I had a discussion with him at the Fourth of July.
Pullman treasure.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, voice of the coogs, right? I had a discussion with him at the Fourth of July. I pulled him aside real quick and, and he was famous. Whenever a city council person would be elected, he would go in the next day, the day after the election to their place of business or set up a meeting with them. And sit down and just explain the position and say, okay, here's what it is. Here's what we need to do. Here's what you should expect. He didn't tell them how to do the job. He just told them basically what the job was. And one of the things he always really pushed was, remember, this is nonpartisan. And I, I asked him at the Fourth of July, I said, if I'm elected to the council, would you, as a personal favor to me, come to me and give me that speech? Because I, I want to make sure.
That's cool.
That I'm doing everything I can to properly represent the city of Pullman.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, again, you know, that, we're, we're not even, we're just coming up on the primaries. So I have no idea if I'm going to be running in the general or if I'm going to be supporting somebody in the general. But ultimately, you know, that's, that's one of the cool things about being able to talk to people in the past and, and learn about the position. So one of the things about city council is, and this is universal across every council person I've spoken to, past or present. It's not the job you think it is going in. And how you want to quantify that, that's kind of up to you. But, you know, I think I have an idea, but I think they had an idea too. And I think they learn differently. And I expect I may learn differently too. But in my understanding, that's what it is in a nutshell.
I, I appreciate that. As an independent myself, I, I'd like to hear you talk about, you know, not bringing partisan politics into.
Oh, there's no need for it at this level. There's, there really isn't any need for it at the higher levels, in my opinion.
Well, you know, ultimately, city council has two legal responsibilities. One is to pass laws, as you alluded to, and the other is to set the budget.
Yes.
And I think too many people get into this thinking that it's a, it's a bully pulpit.
Yeah.
A platform to be able to just pontificate about whatever you want. And it's like, no, there's actually business to be done.
Various rental laws and such.
Well, and, and rental laws could be.
You do, that is part of policy.
But like, um, the hard work of, of policymaking is slow. It tends to be boring. You know, uh, city council, city council is the mayor as the state legislature is the governor.
Yeah.
It's meant to be a deliberative body.
I like, I like to think of it as the city council is the board of directors to the mayor's CEO. If you want to take it to a business level.
Yeah, there's, there's some, there's some comparisons there. Not everything applies, but it's similar. You know.
Yeah, the city council can't kick the mayor out.
Exactly. But, but you, but, but we as citizens can.
Yeah.
Right? You know, that's, that's why you have a separate city manager from a mayor. When you pay a full-time salary, they can be fired. The other one, you just pay a stipend and they can't be fired. They can only be recalled. Like it's a separation of powers.
So maybe considered a, a, uh, employee-owned business.
There you go. There you go. Um, but you know, I, I don't want city council stack of people who think this is their personal YouTube channel to be able to just preach at people. Like, there's actually work to be done. And we need a deliberative body with a good representation of the community, a diverse set of voices to be able to make pragmatic decisions about local issues.
Again, going back to, every one of us brings something different to the table.
Absolutely.
And, and that, that doesn't just apply to all the candidates that are running. That applies to everybody on the council and everybody that's been on the council. So yeah, I mean, there, there are different points of view.
And on your website, you say, Pullman needs city council members who are ready to tackle the issues.
Yes.
What are some of the issues that you feel are, are facing Pullman right now? And, and what would you do to help tackle them?
Okay. Well, of course, budget is always number one on everybody's mind, it seems like. And budgeting concerns are going to become very real very soon. They already are. But, you know, I mean, when you're crafting a budget, of course, there's certain things you have to consider. Like you, you have priority funding, uh, critical funding is probably a better word. When you speak of critical funding, you're talking about things like fire, police, water, basic infrastructure that keeps civilization running. And then you have the, the secondary funding, which is, you know, primary, I, I guess secondary is a bad choice, but you know, secondary to the critical funding. So primary funding might be a better way of putting it. Uh, things like parks and services, things that make life worth living.
Things that we love and all agree are important.
Right.
Maybe not as important as keeping the water running.
Right. And, and unfortunately, you know, sometimes there are cuts there. You, you don't want to take away any parks, obviously. People love their parks. They love the, the Parks and Rec. I, I started.
We have great.
Playing, yeah. I started playing soccer for Parks and Rec when I was in third grade. That was my first experience, you know? Every year I am the emcee of the egg hunt they put on.
Love it.
And, and I have been for the past fifteen years. It's, I mean, I, I remember being part of it as a kid. So it is a really interesting kind of, you know, full circle to come around. Uh, I, I, along with Glenn Johnson, uh, we are the emcees of the Lental Fest Parade. So, you know. So, you know, and Parks and Rec is involved with this. The city is involved with it. Lentle Fest is more chamber, but still, the city gets very involved. It's funding for things like Parks and Rec and the programs that is, can be a target on occasion for cuts. But you want to try and do things that work for the community. For example, you know, cutting childcare might not benefit the community. Cutting, you know, from three swim programs down to two separate sessions instead of three.
Does our city have a childcare program?
No.
Okay.
That I know of.
Yeah, yeah. I know we have an extreme shortage of childcare centers.
But but we do have, we do have in the city hall, there is the preschool, there is a senior center. So, you know, I mean.
There's some programming.
Of of a mindset, there is some programming, exactly, that operates in a similar vein. Yeah, when I said childcare, you know, I mean, that's that's something that might be worth exploring in the future. But, you know, I mean, it's also something that would add to the budget. So when you, when you look at the budget, you have to consider all these things. Would childcare be more beneficial than a third swim program? Would, you know, maybe adding that instead, or, you know, do we just cut the one swim program and stick with the two? Moving forward, you have to consider those things. So budget is number one. Number two, what are we going to do about the aquifer? We want to grow Pullman. We want to continue to add. We need more housing. There is a lack of housing, affordable housing specifically. We would like to bring in more business, of course. But we're already stressing our aquifer. What are we going to do about that? Now, there are plans in, not in place, but being discussed about sucking water out of Dwarshak in Idaho and because Idaho has less restrictive laws on such things and recharging the aquifer on the Idaho side. That would help out, but of course.
Maybe geologically, we don't know if.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's true. But, I mean, ultimately, it would help out. Would it be beneficially helpful? We don't know.
It would help, it would help out for sure on the Idaho side.
Yeah, well, we do know, I've been to enough feedback meetings that I know that we are drawing for an aquifer that is in, if you think of it as a bathtub, it starts over in Moscow and runs past Pullman.
Yeah, I'd push back on the bathtub metaphor because that makes it sound like the water's level across.
That's true. That's true. It is underground.
And the Grand Ron Aquifer is incredibly complex. It has some really good science that has some really good guesses about what's down there. But we don't know why the Idaho side of the aquifer is dropping faster than the Washington side. We don't know why pumping is correlated, but not like perfectly with how much it moves up and down. Pullman is using less water now than it was 20 years ago, which is crazy.
Again, armchair engineer. This guy does know his stuff.
And the aquifer is still dropping.
Yeah.
Right? Which is crazy. And so.
I do know Idaho, they, their aqua, or their part of the Grand Ron Aquifer, if you look at the cross section of it, looking like northward, you do see that it is thinner on the Idaho side. It is not quite as deep. So, you know, that may have something to do with it. If there's a bump there in between Pullman and Moscow, that could be why it's lowering over there faster than it is in.
It could be. It's just, it's all very.
We don't know.
We don't, there's no silver bullet.
Right.
There are not available water rights in the in the snake that we could just purchase on the open market. And even if.
In this case, it would be the Clearwater, but yes.
Well, that's on the Idaho side.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the tribal water rights that are potentially up for grabs would be contingent on a much larger project that would have to be federally funded, which.
It would be a very large infrastructure project.
And the state of Idaho has a law that says that they are not allowed to sell water to neighboring states.
Right.
So that would get complicated in a hurry.
But the the law does not specify recharging on the Idaho side and it's slowly trickling over. It's kind of like watering your lawn and maybe it trickles downhill into your neighbor's lawn.
That doesn't sound like a sustainable plan for drinking water.
No.
To have Moscow's leftovers trickle over.
That's, that's a little bit of a that's, that's simplifying it a little too much, I would say, though. What you're doing is recharging the aquifer on the Idaho side. It's connected to Pullman's side. And if you recharge it enough, it will also recharge. It's.
See, I would, I would stop short of saying it will.
Okay, it should. In in theory, it should. Now, that may just solve Idaho's problem.
I've spent enough time with like the irrigators out in central Washington to know that aquifers don't always behave as designed, right?
No, and we really don't know unless unless we were to dig down there or find some, you know, cool x-ray situation where we could actually see what it's doing. We don't really know. But that is one project that is being explored. And again, you know, whether it works or not, they haven't finalized it. They don't know. It will be a big project.
It's not, it's not a silver bullet.
But it's, but it's an option that may work. Is is all I'm saying.
It may.
It is an option that may work.
Meanwhile, we have infrastructure in town that some of it hasn't been upgraded in quite a while. My hometown, central Washington, they had a water main that dated back to the the mining years that was made out of wooden slats that was banded together. They replaced that one main over a three mile stretch and they gained 40% of their supply back. They were losing.
Okay, that's.
Percent.
I do know, I happen to live on Hall Drive and when they redid that, I saw firsthand what the water mains looked like. We had a huge gash in the pipe, the main in front of our house that was just spewing water and they're like, yeah, that's not supposed to happen. They had to come in, cut that out and replace it and everything. And so, yeah, I know.
It has not hit our ceiling of how much we could gain back from infrastructure improvements.
That's true.
Inside the city, and that's something that we control.
There, there are many options. There are many options. I was just stating one that would benefit the entire area if it works, as you so gently pointed out. But but you're right. You're absolutely right. I mean, investment in infrastructure is one of those things I would consider critical funding. You know, when you're considering the budget, you know, we're already doing the water mains. We already did High Street or Hall Drive. We are doing other projects right now, like Terra View, we're working on that. There, there are projects in place and you're right. I don't know that we're going to gain 40%. That's a
And that's an awful, optimistic number. It's an extreme situation, but like, you know, we're dealing in, dealing with a finite resource.
Yes.
We can't just conjure more water.
No.
Right?
And and we need to figure out what's going on.
There's no easy ways to acquire new water.
Right.
You know, I've been a little bit frustrated by some of the public discourse here. I've heard candidates over the years talk very flippantly about, well, just get it from the Snake River.
Yeah.
You know, as if we hadn't thought of that. Thank you very much.
I ran into that when I was running for the county position, is a lot of people were like, well, just I believe that was the quote from from the person I was running against and.
Pivoting slightly, you know, transportation issues. We all want trucks out of downtown. And I've heard several people say, well, duh, just build a bypass. And I'm like, do you know what that costs?
Yeah.
We don't have that money. You would need a federal earmark and there aren't, there aren't any right now.
Like, no, there is no federal funding to be had hardly. Yeah, a bypass is interesting and and needed, but, you know, we've, we've been down this road before, if you'll forgive the pun. You know, Bishop Boulevard was originally the southern bypass for downtown.
And then we stacked it full of businesses.
Didn't, didn't work out quite right. Not to mention navigating that corner at the, at the entrance to WSU down there. It's not, not easy if you're driving an 18 wheeler, you know, much, much more so if you're driving a double. So, yeah, I mean, that is something that is going to come up. I've looked at the preliminaries, the ideas. You know, I mean, I've looked at like sand road as a bypass. I haven't made a decision which one I think is the best.
Have you read the RTPO report?
Yeah, yeah, I've, I've looked it over. I have gotten in depth, but I have looked it over. And it's, it's interesting. There are a lot of options, but I haven't made a decision personally on
What the RTPO.
Which would be best to support.
What the RTPO, well, I think that's, that's the misunderstanding with the framing. What the RTPO report presented was that there is no one option
No.
that does the whole job.
Right.
There's three options that all fix different aspects of it, but you definitely couldn't afford to do all of them at once.
But.
And even if you do all three of them, it doesn't fix the ultimate bypass issue. It just kind of alleviates a little bit of local traffic.
But ultimately, you can't have your cake and eat it too. You know, you have to make decisions and they are hard decisions to make. You have to decide what's best for the community as a whole. You have to decide which one works best. And and we'll have to do that as a group.
To you is, so are you prepared to dive into the nuance of all these issues? Because I got to say, for this whole conversation, going all the way back to the conversation about the city manager, what I hear is a lot of snap judgment of like, well, this could have been done better. And if only they, you know, and it's like, well, there, there's more with every single one of these issues, there's more going on.
That's true.
And I have noticed in our community, a lot of people don't read that deeply into what's happening. So as a potential elected official, are you prepared to do the hard work of finding the nuance?
Yeah.
Rather than just saying, hit the easy button?
No, 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 the the easy button doesn't exist in in government, as far as I'm concerned. You have to dive into all the details. You have to make the decisions in an informed manner.
Great.
Otherwise, you're not making.
So what's an example of a local issue that some people, a lot of people think is easy? And you're like, no, there's more to it than that and people need to see it not as quite as binary.
Well, we already discussed the budget. And a lot of people think, you know, there was a Facebook post going around a while back, well, several years back, in fact, that compared, you know, the federal budget to a household budget. And a lot of people don't understand that. That is completely different. Their household budget is nowhere near the same as any sort of governmental budget, departmental budget. There, there are a lot of different nuances involved. You have to get into. You have to understand exactly, you know, why these dollars are being asked for, what these dollars are being spent on. And not, and everybody takes the time to look into that and make sure they know the full picture. I would go so far as to say it's almost impossible to understand the full picture just because there's so much involved. You know, you can do what you can do. You can go in and of course, there will be departmental heads that will lobby for, you know, their, their departments, which you expect. There will be citizen groups that will lobby for, you know, different respective funding to be done. And taking all that into account and, you know, you have to be pragmatic about it, but you also have to understand if you have a whole group of citizens that really want something to happen, you know, you have to be ready to explain to them either why it is not going to happen and why you need to spend the money somewhere else. Or you have to be ready to explain why you didn't spend the money there and instead chose to go with the choice presented by these groups of people lobbying for these funds. It's difficult. It's incredibly difficult. The learning curve on this, from, from all my discussions with past city representatives, it is tremendous. And do I think I'm up to the task? Yes, absolutely. I'm, I'm excited about it, frankly. I think, I think it would be, you know, dare I say, a lot of fun
Yeah.
to dive into this. I, I mean, as, and I, I apologize, I keep bringing this up, I'm fanboying a little bit. But as the armchair engineer, you understand the nuances. And and I'm sure there's many other people out there that understand the the different nuances. You know, maybe, maybe it is a household budget. Maybe you're trying to figure out how to make Christmas happen, you know, in in November. And you have to figure out where you can take monies from. Okay, in that, in that vein, it is similar. But in reality, you're answering to a lot more people than just, you know, your kids at Christmas or
Rarely so simple.
Yeah, yeah, it never is. And, yeah, I'm excited about that. And I would love to get into the meat of things and figure out what's going on. Now, I, I'm not sure if I'm a little offended by the statement of snap judgment. Perhaps you were right.
Speaking more about the community.
Okay, I was like, wait a minute, I don't remember saying anything that wasn't fairly well thought out, or at least trying to.
The city manager situation.
The city manager situation. But again, you know, I'm speaking as a member of the community.
Yeah.
I'm not speaking as any elected official.
Well, I, and I don't. Just city manager, but you said that that was like your reason for running.
I think that was an impetus. I, let me, let me, I hate to walk things back, but I will, I will walk that back a little bit.
They all have the right to change their mind.
Well, I'm not changing my mind. I'm just
Clarify.
Probably clarifying, yeah, changing, changing the way I presented it. When I said that was a reason for running, I did preface that with, I think that's a reason for a lot of the candidates that are running that kind of pushed or nudged them a little bit in the direction of running. And it's, it's not, it's not a reason per se. But it is definitely a consideration. It made me go, you know, if this is happening, maybe we need some representation that can be more pragmatic, that can pay more attention and you know, share information with the public. Maybe there isn't more information to be shared. Maybe it is, you know, as you said, once the city, you know, is notified that they may be sued, well, they got to deal with you like they're going to be sued by you. So maybe that's the case. But it was definitely, I'd be lying if I said it was not something that was a factor in me choosing to run.
No, that's, that's fair. That's fair. And I appreciate you being willing to step up even in these muddied circumstances.
It's, it's going to be a challenge. I, I know that. I expect that. And, you know, I expect no matter who wins, Ward one, two and three, I expect them to operate to the standards I would expect from myself. And as I said, I will reach out to them if I am the one who ultimately, you know, gains the council seat and and I'm seated up there for Ward one. I will be more than not just willing, but I will actively seek out their input. Because every single one of those people running that I have sat at the dais with at the League of Women Voters, for example, Bobby, she's a fun person to talk to, you know, Brian, I admire his commitment to family. I've gotten to know all these people on a fairly personal level. You know, and then, let's see, Cindy, we assume she may have suspended her campaign. She has some interesting ideas. And then we get to Mr. Pitzer. He is a, not, not Joe, mind you, James. He is a wonderful, you know, longtime family in the community. He is a wonderful young man who is stepping up to serve his community. That is to be admired. And then, of course, Mr. Cross, you know, longtime worker at the university, longtime army guy. And the thing I admire most about him is he is a grandfather on another level. We were joking one time, I said, you know, he was talking about his signs. He has one of the most unique sign designs out there. If you see them, they're all handmade by his grandchildren. And he actually said, I asked him, you know, he said his children or grandchildren are coming to visit. I asked him, I said, you know, how was your visit with your grandchildren? And he said, oh, no, they're still coming. I'm, I thought they were here already. He's like, oh, no, that's the other tribe. He has two tribes of grandchildren. That's amazing. So that's why I say he's a grandpa.
What a cool, what a cool community to live in with such diverse, you know, diverse voices.
Yeah, I mean, I could go on. I could talk about, you know, Ward two and Ward three and all the people. They're, they're all wonderful people and I don't think there's a bad choice, honestly. I really, I mean, that may be detrimental to my personal goals in my campaign, but the truth is, I don't think that there's a bad choice.
I think the setting the.
We're all fantastic.
A setting the tone of neighborliness is important. And I feel like I got to know you better here. Hopefully you got to know me a little bit more.
Yeah.
And please reach out if if anything comes up or we can clarify anything.
No, this is fantastic, you know, I absolutely love sitting down with you and having chat and, you know, this, I see your guy wrapping it up over there, so.
Yeah, thank you so much.
That's the problem with interviewing somebody who works in media, you know, we know the hand signals.
Exactly.
Yeah, Adam, I appreciate that. I really do.
Awesome. Thanks so much.
All right, thank you.